Good morning, good morning, Mr. President and good morning, City Council. Today, I am honored to recognize my good friend and a friend to all of us on the City Council, and that's Mr. Raymond Chan, one of the most senior and the highest ranking, one of the highest ranking city administrators of the Asian and Pacific Islander descent. I'm also honored to co-present today's presentation with Council President Wesson, Councilmember Jose Huizar, and Ana Guerrero, Chief of Staff to Mayor Eric Garcetti, to recognize Raymond for his outstanding service to the city of Los Angeles.[87.04][87.04](Applause) And you know, I had to fight off all the other council members for the privilege of actually being the main presenter, which I very much thank my colleagues, but this past May, Raymond retired after serving more than 33 years with the city of L.A. Given his decorated background as a licensed structural and civil engineer, real estate broker, and seasoned city administrator, Raymond was appointed as Deputy Mayor of Economic Development by Mayor Eric Garcetti in May 2016 to lead the city's ambitious economic policy agenda. It is Raymond's leadership and decade-long experience in the city that makes him invaluable, and his dedication to the work that has made the lasting impact to all Angelenos. Prior to serving in the mayor's office, Raymond served as General Manager of the Department of Building and Safety. In his capacity, Raymond directed the operation of five bureaus and managed over 1,000 employees with $160 million budget. His innovative and collaborative leadership earned him the prestigious recognition of as Building Official of the Year in 2013 by the California Building Association. Over the years, Raymond has initiated and implemented numerous civic enhancement programs, where 20 of these programs have received rewards for its creativity and innovation. However, this is not the first time we've honored Raymond for his tremendous work. Just last year, we, the City Council, recognized Raymond during the Asian-Pacific-American Heritage Month for his work in diversifying the city's workforce and paving the way for more Asian-Pacific-American leaders like myself. While we are very sad to see Raymond go, we will remember his legacy and work to shape and grow our global city. Now, before I bring Raymond to the podium, I'd like to welcome Councilmember Jose Huizar, Chair of the City's Planning and Land Use Committee.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Huizar.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Councilmember Ryu, and colleagues, it has been a privilege and pleasure to work alongside my good friend Ray Chan for more than a decade. As Chair of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, I have appreciated his leadership, support, and unwavering can-do approach. These qualities have proven critical in addressing all of the challenges that the Plum Committee and this city has sought to remedy throughout the years. We've been saying goodbye to a number of truly solid public servants lately, and Ray Chan is at the top of that list when it comes to people who exemplify what a public servant should be. We sometimes hear complaints that our city is trapped in bureaucracy, that our departments just say no, or that they make things too complicated, and that our bureaucracy prevents the city from moving forward. No one has ever said that about Ray Chan. As a General Manager for the Department of Building and Safety, he built a reputation as someone who didn't accept no as an answer, who dug through the bureaucracy, found creative solutions, and did the work necessary to say yes. I think a big part of that is Ray Chan is someone who truly enjoys helping others and bringing people together. Those qualities are a great legacy for our younger city workers to emulate, because as Ray knows better than anyone, that's truly how you get things done in the city, by bringing people together.
Mr. Huizar, one second. Please, shh, and most of this noise we're generating, so Ray's a great man, a great friend, mister, and I'd like to have, show him a little respect, Mr. Huizar, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. President, they're all talking about how great of a person Ray Chan is.[322.27][322.27](Laughter) Thank you, colleagues. I'm looking at you, Mr. O'Farrell, but keep talking about Mr. Chan, go right ahead.[329.62][329.62](Laughter) When the recession hit, Ray found ways to do more with less. When it was clear that new development was critical to getting ourselves out of the economic mess we were in, he designed ways to expedite development permits while ensuring the highest safety standards. So we applaud the parallel permitting, expanded case management system, and so many other development services reforms created under Ray's watch. It would not be an overstatement to say that Ray and the dedicated staff at Building and Safety, now under Frank Bush's leadership, have played a critical role in continuing and supporting the current building boom while ensuring public safety stays at the forefront of the city's permitting services. And in true public servant fashion, when he retired for the first time and was then asked by the mayor to come back to run his economic development group, Ray once again put the city needs ahead of his own, put aside his own plans, and said yes. Personally, I have worked with him directly on many of the development projects currently leading our DTLA revitalization, and I am constantly amazed at how quickly he understands the issues involved with each project and finds solutions to keep us all on track. Ray has left the Department of Building and Safety in the mayor's office in capable hands, but no one will ever be able to truly replace Ray Chan. We will all miss his vigor, his intellect, his compassion, and his friendship. He is one of a kind and in the most flattering way possible, old school. Ray, I am truly saddened to see you leave us after decades of service to this great city, but we in the city are all better off for knowing you, and I am proud to consider you my friend. Thank you, Ray, and congratulations.[426.62][426.62](Applause)
Thank you, Councilman Huizar. Next, we have Ana Guerrero, Chief of Staff to Mayor Eric Garcetti.
Ms. Guerrero, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Council President Wesson and members of the Los Angeles City Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to say a few words on behalf of Mayor Garcetti about the incomparable Ray Chan. Like many of you here today, the mayor and I have worked with Ray Chan over many years here at City Hall, and were always impressed with his commitment to public service and his dedication and loyalty to the city of Los Angeles. So when Mayor Garcetti had the opportunity to appoint a permanent General Manager to the Department of Building and Safety, there really was no other choice other than Ray Chan. It was simple, and he did not disappoint. He continued to do great things and to deliver for the city of Los Angeles, and not only did he do great work, he built a great team. As you can see by the people here today, Ray is beloved by everyone who works with him and for him. And when he came to me about a year ago, last May 2016, with his letter to inform me about his retirement, I gave the letter back to him, and I asked him to please put a pin on that, because we needed him to give a little bit more to the city. And as Councilmember Huizar just said, he set aside his personal priorities to again make the city of Los Angeles and all of us a priority. And again, he did not disappoint. He brought that same can-do attitude, that same commitment to public service, to customer service, to the mayor's office, and the city of Los Angeles is all the better for it. So in losing Ray Chan, we lose a lot. We lose wisdom, we lose knowledge, but fortunately, Ray Chan, before he retired the first time, wrote a book where he put down all of his thoughts about leadership, management, and how to get things done. So do not let him leave without giving you a copy of this tome.[548.32][548.32](Laughter) What successful LADBS leaders do and how to do it. It has all kinds of nuggets, which I have highlighted here, including a whole section dedicated to how he kept his paper calendar, even though he was the last person in the city of Los Angeles to keep a paper calendar.[568.38][568.38](Laughter) But I want to end, I want to read his last page, which says a lot about not just what Ray did, but what kind of person he is. It says, "We have to always remember that leadership is not about authority, but about responsibility, not about power, but an honor, not a right, but a privilege, not a position, but actions, not what to do to people, but for people," which I think has everything to say about Ray Chan.[599.29][599.29](Applause) One more thing, one more thing. We wanted to, we already had a party for Ray in the mayor's office, and we gave him a frame certificate, but we wanted to give him something, the mayor's office with Building and Safety, that really symbolized his contributions to the city, and we thought, what would be better than the official bird of Los Angeles than the crane? It says, "Raymond S. Chan, Building Boom Booster, served L.A. City from 1984 to 2017." Thank you very much, Ray.[631.16][631.16](Applause) And I will say Frank Bush built this himself. It actually, it moves, and you can play with it at home.
All right, good. Thank you so, oh, listen, thank you, thank you, Paul. Beautiful tears to the eyes, Paul. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Ms. Guerrero. Mr. President, I know you wanted to say a few words, and I'm sure all of our colleagues do too.
Well, first of all, I have to say to the Ana and the mayor's office, that is a very nifty, we need to be more creative when we are honoring other people. I'm sure that Ray will cherish that crane, that mini-crane. Ray, there are a lot of members that want to speak, so I won't take up a lot of time other than to say that you are the best of the best, and that you have a reputation around this building where whenever you need to get something done, that you go and you see Ray, and you see Ray's people. Not only have you delivered for us, the members and our staff, you did a phenomenal job in making sure that the bench in your office is full with capable people, so that as you move on, the city continues to move on. But we will never, ever be able to replace you, and I know when you went into the mayor's office, you told him you were going to leave, and Ana asked you to stay another year. Yesterday, I indicated that this council is going to be starting an independent commission on housing, affordable housing, and you're going to be the first person appointed to be on that commission. So you can't retire, retire. We need you.
Yes, sir.
We need your expertise, and we need people that can help us cut through the bureaucracy at the city of L.A.
Yes, sir.
So you've been my personal friend, and for me, you're one of the few friends that I can see eye to eye with, so you are a very special, you are a very, very special friend to me, and I look forward to working with you in your next capacity as you write the next chapter in your book. So with that said, I'd like to recognize another dear friend of yours and another individual that we all see eye to eye with, and that's Mr. Mitch Englander. You notice I didn't even call his name, and he stood up.
I already knew, I already knew. I was standing the whole time.[793.23][793.23](Laughter) My experience, let that sink in, my experience with Building and Safety has been fascinating over the years, and because I had this really special and unique relationship with the folks out in the district, in the valley, when I was the Chief of Staff. Frank and I put together task forces that we'd go out on nights and weekends with Eric and many others, and some of the key staff were just phenomenal. But then, my experience when it came downtown was horrific. I also, I often labeled the department as one of the worst-run departments in the city of Los Angeles. When I, when I first got elected, I put in a motion for disruption and said, "We need to get rid of the Department of Building and Safety, perhaps merge it with the Planning Department," because there's nobody that I've ever met that can turn around what needs to be done. It's failing miserably. Let me tell you, you have been a ray of sunshine. You, with your team and your staff, have now set the bar so high to what a department can achieve. It's just, I'm in awe. It's just been incredible. And when I often talk about the best general managers we've ever had in the city, or people that have been turnaround artists, that have been able to make a difference, Councilmember Huizar said, "You know how to work to yes." I've never heard a no. I've never heard a no. I have, in the past, made the mistake of calling Ray Chan and asking him to do something, and then he says, "Yes, I'm on it, I'll take care of it," and right after I hang up the phone, I realized I called the wrong department, but he didn't care. He would do it anyway. He never called me on it, he would do it anyway. It didn't matter. The cat was stuck in the tree, he's there getting it down.[924.31][924.31](Laughter) The guy was everywhere. And I gotta tell you, we're just as proud to have Frank, and he's just been phenomenal in making sure that he's continued your legacy and what you've created. You've done and made a tremendous difference. You've been a good friend. Most people don't know, we have a very close relationship outside the building, or you've been a mentor to me, a lot of guidance, and a lot of the principles that you've written in your book, you've shared with me and passed down to me, and a lot of private conversation on how to lead, and because I've gone to you and saying, "How did you do what you've done?" You've taken what I've always thought was the worst department and made it the best department in the city of L.A. It's phenomenal. Hats off to you. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Carets.[978.13][978.13](Applause)
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and a couple of the things I wanted to say have already been said. I mean, you're the anti-bureaucrat. You're the epitome of somebody that gets things done even when they look impossible, and I appreciate that. And as was said, you've also mentored Frank Bush, so we have a replacement that has that same can-do attitude, which is critical if we're actually going to get ourselves out of the recession that we still are at the tail end of by getting developments done. But in my district, I appreciate the projects that you've helped move forward, but I also appreciate the projects that you've helped slow down a little bit. We have, in particular, an area in Bel Air that is a disaster, or was a disaster, of epic proportions. I actually had a public meeting when we first started to realize how problematic it was, and we were supposed to have 15 people show up in a little space, and we had 80 of the angriest people, and we were glad we had LAPD and security there, because I think I literally would have been rushed and mobbed by this group. And there were so many problems that seemed unsolvable, and projects that were approved by right and were still a disaster for the community, and contractors that were violating every rule, and you found every possible way to get this issue under control, including having inspectors go out on an almost daily basis to every single giant house that was being built and stopping every violation. And it literally saved the health and safety of the community, and that entire community is very grateful for your good work, as of course am I, and your help with the mansionization issue and other things that are unique to my district, whereas most of the districts, people just want projects done. We've had to head in both directions, and you've handled that so perfectly. My time on the council would have been different if you were not the person at the helm of Building and Safety at the right time. So along with everything else, I'm sad about your departure as a good friend. We'll have to stay in touch anyway afterwards, and I may ask you some questions and ask for advice, even though you're not in the same official position, because you're still the fount of all knowledge in your arena of expertise, so I thank you for that. And I do have to note, I'm not so sure that Mitch did these things by accident, but I've had a few times where I've called you for things that weren't in your department, just because I thought somehow you would help me get them done, and that always happens. So if there ever was the perfect example of a general manager doing the right thing and being as effective as could be, you are it. So I thank you for all your great work and look forward to staying in touch afterwards.
Thank you, sir.[1188.58][1188.58](Applause)
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Still relatively early on the queue, and I don't know if there's anything I can say that won't be redundant, so I'll do my best to be brief. I was shocked when Ana held up that book, because you must have been being paid by the word, because your philosophy of government, I would have boiled down to a single page. Yes, we can get that done, or yes, we will figure that out, because that has always been what you have done, just like Mr. Englander or Mr. Carets. If it was definitely Building and Safety, or if it was maybe Planning, or if it was maybe Housing, you were always the one to call, and you would figure out how to do it and help get the other departments to cooperate. I occasionally have given out a yes award to city employees, and I've always tried to do it to the rank-and-file who helped cut the red tape, but if there's anybody who's deserving of that award, it's you, Ray. The thing that, the only time I ever sensed you hesitating when you said yes was just a minute ago when Mr. Wesson talked about appointing you to that commission. You said yes, but in your eyes, you were saying, "Oh, hell no, I'm going to be on a beach somewhere." So I don't know if you can count that as a yes, Mr. Wesson. Thank you. The thing that I think is most notable, though, is, you know, it's always awesome when we find that gem of a city employee who knows how to cut red tape and get to yes, but it is as rare as a four-leaf clover to find someone who can do that, but also create a culture around him that does that. I mean, you have done that not just with your immediate subordinates who have succeeded you so well, but you've done that with your department, and you have done that with so much of the city, and you're a great example of that. Mr. Wesson said that he was complimenting the crane and said how we need to come up with creative gifts to give to award people. So I'm going to try to see, this was not planned, I'm going to try to see if we can outdo that, and I have a special guest and assistant to help me give you something, I think even cooler, and this is Mark Wire from Lawa.
Thank you, Councilmen. I'm new to Lawa. I'm the Director of Communications for Lamp, but I've heard your name a lot in halls and meetings. CEO Deborah Flint, and Deputy Executive Directors Trevor Daley and Sampson Mungetsu send their regards. I feel indebted to you for your work on projects at LAX, in particular Lamp, for without you and your contributions, I would not have this job. So on behalf of Lawa, I present you this lamp, which is actually a runway light, and now you can always find your way to LAX.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.[1370.65][1370.65](Applause)
Thank you. You bet. Thanks, man. Thank you, Mr. President.
That's, that's a good one, Mr. Bonin, and I promise you, Mr. Krikorian, had I known Bonin had a lamp to give away, I would have put him at the end of the queue. Our next speaker is Mr. Paul Krikorian.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. The only thing is, the lamp should be a green light. You know, this is one of those really sad days, I think, for many of us, that we had hoped would never come, and Ms. Guerrero, we want to thank you for extending this day a little bit longer and ensuring that we kept Ray here to contribute to the city for a while longer. But it's also a day, really, to celebrate a career of incredible achievement, an inspired choice by our mayor to take over the Department of Building and Safety, and as Mr. Bonin said, to really recreate the department and to build a different kind of a culture in this place, which is what Ray Chan has done. One of the things that we, early in my time here, that we heard most often was how Building and Safety was a problem for jobs creation, and that Building and Safety, more often than not, got in the way of investing in our city. But under Ray's leadership, that turned around 180 degrees. It became, in fact, the model for other departments of how we encourage people to invest in Los Angeles, how we can get to a place where we're protecting the public and still ensuring a result that creates jobs and economic activity and investment. And it is unquestionably true that there are literally billions of dollars of foreign investment in this city, in massive office towers that will be seen, you know, by people throughout the United States when they come to Los Angeles, that would not have happened but for Ray's commitment to this city, his willingness to work with investors to try to find a way to get to yes. And that has created literally thousands and thousands of jobs for people here in Los Angeles, millions and millions of dollars of revenues that we all benefit from, and that would not have happened without Ray's leadership. And Ray's leadership has now trickled not only throughout Building and Safety, but throughout the rest of the city as well. And so the only objection I have to your book, Ray, is that it says how successful LADBS leaders can succeed. It really, LADBS should be taken out of the title, because your contributions have really changed the way the department heads throughout our city have viewed their role in economic investment in this city. Time and time again, we hear Building and Safety being used as an example of how it should be, and other departments hear that, and they are following your lead, just as Frank Bush and all the other men and women of Building and Safety are following your lead now in the department. So everyone in this city, whether they know it or not, owe a debt of gratitude to you, Ray. They owe it to you that they are kept safe in their buildings, but they also owe it to you that our city is thriving and succeeding and flourishing economically in large measure because of the work that you've done. So I've hoped that this day would not come, but your legacy will extend beyond you. And by the way, Mr. President, that was really a deft move in giving Ray his next assignment in a place where he could not say no. That was, so we owe a debt of gratitude to you too, Mr. President, keeping him around at least a little bit longer as well. So Ray, congratulations. Thank you on behalf of my constituents and everyone in Los Angeles, and best wishes on your retirement.[1638.36][1638.36](Applause)
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ray Chan, for the past 15 years, I have been witness to your commitment to serving others, and your exemplary, I think, example of public service is really, I think, to be admired and also to be modeled by others. You're standing with an amazing group of people around you who have all been so wonderful over the years. I just know that from the time I was a new deputy for then-Councilmember Eric Garcetti, some of the first phone calls I ever made were to you. And when I was a new council member and I was working on how can the city be more business-friendly to serve our small business community, and I was talking to you about some measures that I wanted to introduce, which we now have working and winding their way through, I kept getting irritated, because every time I would talk to you about something, you would pioneer it into the system and make it happen already without me having to do, take any legislative action in that direction. So I kept feeling stymied at every turn, but I will say this, because of your work in your whole career and in recent years, the city business community has also benefited, and part of your legacy will be really to make sure that Los Angeles government has a profile that serves those who spend their life savings to open a business, usually a neighborhood-serving business, somewhere in their community, which makes our neighborhoods more vibrant and it strengthens our economy. So thank you for schooling a brand-new council member through his first early years, and I think that's your legacy. So much has been said that is so on point for who you are and what you've been able to accomplish and how you've helped others, and you must take into your retirement an intense level of satisfaction for a job well done and the fact that you provide an example for all of us to follow. You're, you just really are, I think, the best example of a public servant, and we can all learn from that and all be better at our own jobs because of your career. So thank you so much, Ray.
Thank you, sir.[1787.11][1787.11](Applause)
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too, Ray, just want to join my colleagues in wishing you well. You know, you are really a special person. You know, you are really a special person for, for all of us. And we appreciate your, your leadership and your friendship. And as others have said, you know, you have exemplified the, the fact that you don't have to say "no," that you can say "yes," and you can make things happen. And we all have had the experiences of talking to you about a project or a program or an idea, and then you turn around and look around, and it's, and it's happening. And so we just appreciate, Ray, your, your leadership. Your legacy is certainly going to be the individuals who you've worked with over the years. But in terms of impacting the quality of life, either West Side or South LA, you have just been singularly successful. We appreciate you, we love you, and we look forward to continuing that collaboration. We know you're not going to be too far away, but always willing to help and to assist. And we appreciate you, thank you, Ray, for all you've done and continue to do. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Ru, back to you.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, colleagues. And you know, we're going to hear from the honoree in a quick second. And I, and I know Ray is joined by so many admirers, so many friends, your former staff, your, your friend and mentee Frank Bush, and a lot of other general managers from other departments. And as well, and not just people from in the building, but also outside the building. And while we heard from many of our colleagues from in the building, I just wanted to have one representative to represent someone outside the building and from the business community who has experienced the "yes" of, of Mr. Ray Chan. And that's your fellow honoree for the Asian Pacific Heritage Month, and Mr. Chris Martin from AC Martin.
Thank you. Council President Wesson, city council members, I am here to praise all of you and to praise Ray. This, the sentiment that all of you are expressing is wonder and amazement. How does a government regulator turn his office into an office of economic development? Ray has done this in a unique way, just, I'm going to say, from the perspective of the Wilshire Graham, which opened last month, $1,350 million capital investment in Los Angeles, making over 11,000 jobs would not have been possible without Ray's leadership. And it served to pave the way, as we called it, the poster child for international investment. Come to LA, the doors are open for business. And I'll be short. An American poet named R.L. Sharp recognized this quality, well, this is over 100 years ago, he must have known Ray when he wrote this. He said, "Isn't it strange how princes and kings and clowns that caper in sawdust rings? And common people like you and me are builders of eternity. Each is given a book of rules, a shapeless mass and a bag of tools. And each must build ere life is flown, a stumbling block or a stepping stone. Ray is a builder of stepping stones." Thank you.
Now, without much further ado, we'd like to hear from Mr. Ray Chan.
Well, good morning, Council President. Good morning, councilmembers. And good morning, Councilmember Huizar, Councilmember Ru, and my boss Anna right here, who brought tears to my eyes. Okay? And also, good morning, colleagues and my friends. Actually, I have to say, first of all, is that I'm totally touched and completely, completely flattered by your very, very kind remarks. If my wife ever believed 10% of what you said about me, I would be a very happy man. With that said, I just want to make sure that you understand that this moment is going to be a lifelong memory for me, and thank you. I also want to say is this, I would not consider myself as the luckiest man on earth because I have not won the lottery yet. However, I definitely would say that I am a man blessed with a career better than I deserve, and I really mean it, is because of all of you. First, I'm totally indebted to Mayor Garcetti and my boss Anna right here for their trust and confidence in me. And I also want to say that I'm totally indebted to the city council, who has been supporting me, assisted me, guided me for all those past years. I also had the opportunity to work with closely with many competent general managers, such as Frank Bush, Vince Patoni, Gene Sarocca, also Deborah Flynn, and also Dong Lu. And I must also show my gratitude to Public Work Commissioners Joel Hacinto and also general managers Gary Lee Moore. Now, this is going to be a long list, okay? Gary Lee Moore, okay? And also with Nasario Socera and John Rimmer, and also Enrique Salvador, and also Ed Abrahimian, Salida Reynolds, and also Chief Terrasas, and also Raj Cervantes, as well as David Wright. Because they accepted me as the partner to improve the development service of the city so projects can be built faster. Now, nothing can be done without the resources given to me by CLA Sharon So over there, and also, you know, CEO Richard Llewellyn, and also my buddy Tony Royster, as well as Cat Ross. So I know the list that I have to thank people is longer than most of the Oscar winners. Okay? But just bear with me, I'm almost done. I can never thank enough of all the staff members of the Department of Building and Safety. Okay? Also, the Mayor's Office of Economic Development and also Planning Department, because they work day in and day out very, very hard in order to build the most robust development and economic boom ever happened in the city of Los Angeles. And last but not least, is to my great friends in the development service industry, whom I went through thick and thin with, many of them, and many of them here today. And I just want to say that thank you for their friendship, also their mentorship. And most importantly, is for their tolerance for my occasional idiotic behaviors, which is not easy, but I really appreciate that. So the bottom line is this, okay? I am a very blessed person with a career, but as you can see, that really the career is blessed is because of your involvement, because the role that you play in my work-life. I deeply appreciate that, and I all took it into all my heart. And I just want to say thank you to all of you. And then I want to make one more, one more correction of what Councilmember Bonin said. I love Councilmember Bonin, I respect him a lot, but I just make a big correction. Council, Council President, I actually, okay, I'm reporting to work to the committee.
I love you.
Okay? With a big smile on my face, okay? With no hesitation. With that said, God bless the city of Los Angeles, and thank you so much.
God bless you, Ray.
Boss, thank you so much.
Now, Ray, thank you so much. And to the very end, no one, no person could work alone, no department could work alone, it's all about collaboration. Thank you for showing us that in action. And on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I'd like to present to you a certificate to recognize all your achievements in service to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
And before, before I recognize Mr. Price, we're going to do a two-minute recess. We're going to take a picture with Ray around the center table. So if I could get all of the members to come to the center, we're going to take a group shot.